Sixteen, seventeen.
Oh.
So kids.
There's.
Represented?
She's also.
Oh.
She's going to. To give.
Yeah. Yeah, because I'm not who stopped by those. Hey, we'd like to welcome everyone and call to order the study meeting of the West Valley City Council this May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Beginning our meeting at four thirty P M in the multi-purpose room of West Valley City Hall. We have. Who's the council here? So we have Councilman Yoon, Councilman Norfelt is online. Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Whitstone will join us later. Councilman Harmon is here, Councilman Christensen and myself. We're also joined at the table with our city manager, Mr. Peely and our city recorder, Ms. Kamic. We have our minutes of May thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Turn those to the council for discussion or motion. I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those, any opposed? Okay, those stand approved. We have our introduction of new employees. We'll start with Jamie Young to introduce her new employee, employees. Yes, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am excited to introduce you to a couple of our new employees. First, we have Emma Marchant. Emma is a former college softball player at Utah State Eastern. Is that how, is that what it is now? And she just graduated from Utah State and was the valedictorian of the College of Health, which is pretty awesome. A really smart young lady. She did an internship with us in Parks and Recreation last summer. So we had a good, a good relationship with her and knew how she worked and what a good fit she would be. So when we had a position come open at the senior center this year, she applied and was a great selection for us. Melissa Myastas is our Recreation Program Manager over Youth and Family Programs. She has an extensive history working with kids in preschool and kids camp and in different school situations and childcare. So she again had the perfect experience for the position that we were looking for. She's a Hunter High attendee and a West Valley City resident. And we're, we're really excited to have her. She's, all of these fine folks have hit the ground running and have really just taken charge of their role and gone with it. Nick Johnson is in our Park Maintenance Division. He served a church mission and served several leadership positions within that mission. And we hired him as a park maintenance worker. And he same thing, just had some really great experience and has hit the ground running and is really pleasant. You know, we hire really great people in Parks and Recreation, but to hire three awesome people at the same time was really, really great for us in three different divisions. So we're excited to have them all. Would any of you like to say anything? You don't have to, no pressure. But we're really excited to have these, these three fine, fine new employees.
Thank you, welcome.
You're welcome.
All right, next we'll have to my young, this new employee.
Mayor, council members, like to introduce our newest code enforcement officer, Anna Simpson. She come to us from Housing Connect. She's been a great addition to our team. She covers area nine and we're happy to have her here. She's been a great addition.
Thank you. Did you want to say anything?
No.
Okay. I didn't hear the chat, so. Okay. Finally, we have Chief Jacobs to introduce her new employee.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'd like to introduce you to Eddie B. Brieska. Brieska. He comes to us as a brand new police officer, fresh out of the academy and is very excited to be here and we're excited to have him, so welcome. Would you like to say anything?
Sorry, I work for West Valley.
Awesome, welcome.
Thank you.
All right. We now have our review for our regular meeting tonight. Do we have any changes?
No, ma'am.
Any questions from the council? Okay. Our first public hearing is our reopening of the twenty twenty four, twenty five budget. We'll turn the time over to Mr. Welch. Oh, in fact, never mind, Jim. Councilmember Whitstone had a bunch of questions, so if nobody has an objection, can we pass that one off until he gets here after graduation? Okay. So let's go to our application, G P one, twenty twenty five. Our moderate income housing plan, and we'll turn the time over to Mr. Pastrick.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve Pastrick, Community Development Director. So as the council may recall, we're actually required to have a moderate income housing plan for the state. And we've had one since the late nineties, but the state often changes the requirements for those. In fact, I wouldn't be surprised if they change them again in the next legislative session. And so our last plan was adopted in twenty twenty two. We've, we went through and did a number of changes to the documents. The biggest change is that, as you can imagine, the, just the data for housing has changed substantially over the last several years with pricing, whether that's mortgages or rents. The other is that, and this is the part that the state really cares about, is we're supposed to have goals or select certain strategies that the city is going to implement and show how we're going to essentially implement those strategies over a five-year time period. And so as, as we have a plan adopted, you know, as time goes on and we accomplish those things, we have to sort of show, okay, what are we doing for the next five years? So those are the real, real changes is updates to the data and then also to kind of our five-year implementation plan. I'll go through these, and again, these are taken from just straight out of the document, just to kind of give you an idea of some of the content. So we, in that, we look at essentially three different categories, so extremely low, very low income and low income, which roughly align to thirty, fifty and eighty percent of the area median income. And you, so you can see what those are for the county. So that's what we use. All cities in Salt Lake County use those same county numbers. And then thirty percent is sort of the rule of thumb for how much a household should spend on or the maximum they should spend on housing. So you can see what those numbers are and then how much someone could afford mortgage wise. If you include, you know, property tax, insurance, utilities. Again, it's the conservative approach, which obviously that doesn't buy you a whole lot these days. I, I'm breaking a rule here, putting too much data on a slide. But again, this is just, just taken straight out of the document. So we, to, to, to show how we stack up against other cities, we think it's important to show, you know, the total number of housing units each of these cities have. And then how much of their housing or how much of those housing units are actually affordable at those different price points? And this is all using census data. And again, I won't, I won't get into all the, all the numbers here, but we tend to be one of the more affordable cities, not the most, but one of the more affordable cities in the county based on, on this analysis. So the next several slides just help explain part of the reason why we are more affordable. The first one is how much of a city's housing is renter occupied versus owner occupied? So you can see we're roughly thirty percent is renter occupied and the balance being owner occupied. Why that matters is that generally speaking, renter occupied housing is more affordable. So if you have more renter occupied housing, you're generally going to be more affordable than if you have very little. You look at, for example, Salt Lake City, which they have lots of apartments. If you've driven around downtown lately, you'll notice there's new apartments everywhere. South Salt Lake both just have lots of apartments, so they tend to be more affordable. This is another thing we changed from the, from prior years. We looked at not just tax credit units, we looked at all types of what I call income restricted housing. So this is everything from tax credit units to units that are owned by public housing authorities to the Utah Housing Preservation Fund. So pretty much anything that we could find that was income restricted. And you'll see here on the far right column that just over five percent of our, of all of our housing is income restricted. So it's, it's reserved for households that only make a certain amount of money. And what's interesting, if you compare us to some other cities, I won't name names here, but there's some that have either zero or pretty close to zero in terms of income restricted housing. When compared with the county overall, we're about, we're about average, right? In terms of the, the overall average. And then some cities like Salt Lake, they have much higher than the average. Another reason we, we tend to be more affordable here, and again, just straight out of the document is the mix of housing that we have. So not just owner versus renter, but what kind of housing? So this shows for every city and then also the county, what percentage of our housing is single family detached versus like a duplex or fourplex or mobile home? And you can see here that we're about, you know, high sixty percent single family detached with the balance being kinds of housing. We have other cities that have, you know, over eighty percent that's just single family detached. Now, and again, as a, as a rule of thumb, single family detached tends to be more expensive than say a town home or a mobile home, generally speaking. This also, again, straight from the document, just shows our, the mix of zoning we have for residential. So you can see how many acres we have in each of the different zones. So this just helps explain why we have the, the mix of housing we do because we have a variety of zones. Lastly, so we're required in state code, because we have light rail in our city, we're required to have at least five different strategies. So in state code, there's a list of some thirty plus different strategies that cities can choose from. We have to choose at least five. So in our document, we've, we've selected nine strategies. And two of those were actually required to do, I'll put in those, but I've just listed here, these are the first four, three more, and then the last slide or the last two. Strategy U is one that we've already been, we've talked with the council about before, and that is having stationary plans for each of our light rail stations. So that's one we're actually required to do, so we have to select that one. And then we also have to do either G or H. And so we, to cover our bases, we're, we're showing both of those. But in the document, without getting too much into the weeds, we list these strategies and then talk about how we're implementing each of those strategies in the document. So that's, that's an overview of what's, what's in the proposed update.
Any questions for Mr. Pastrick? So why are we overachievers and having nine strategies instead of the five we're required to have?
Great question. Two reasons, I would say. First is that in the past, the state in reviewing this, the state has to, you know, review it and basically certify that we're in compliance. There have been times where they've said, okay, yeah, we agree that this one counts, this one does, but this one doesn't, right? So it's sort of insurance to make sure if, if one or two don't get counted, we've got still, still a lot of okay. The other is that I think it's, as, as we know, the legislature is often discussing housing. We want to show that we're good, good actors, so to speak, and, and, and doing, not just doing the bare minimum, but we're doing beyond that.
Okay. Not see Lars. Okay. Formulating. Digesting, okay.
Strategy seven, can you maybe show or give an example of how we, how we would act on strategy seven?
Yeah, and that's.
Sorry. You don't have these all memorized, Stephen?
Yeah, yeah, I have, I have them by letter, letter, but not numbers, so. Okay, strategy again.
So for higher density or moderate income residents in rural and commercial or mixed use zones or major.
Oh, yeah, strategy F.
Or F, sorry.
Okay.
Did I say seven?
Yeah.
You did.
Well, it's my fault.
Okay, thanks, thank you. So what we, what we've tried to do here, and I, so far, the state has given us some latitude on this, and I hope they continue to do this, is that we show that we've already done this, right? And so what we, we try to do in those situations is to say, here are some examples of where we've done that, and then now we're just showing how projects are now proceeding through the site plan approval process, and we're now issuing building permits and tracking that. So for example, you look at the, the, the old Kmart site in forty, right? That's an example of, it was a location, it was in a commercial corridor and we rezone it for residential. And so they essentially gave us credit for that, right? So we try to look at examples like that where the city has already approved zone.
Redwood Drive in.
Exactly, so that's, that's another one where.
Drive in of the apartments on.
Both, both, actually, yeah. So, so the drive in's a perfect example of where we say, hey, yes, we've done that and we should, we should get credit for having already done that and not just have to always talk about things we're going to do, right?
Okay.
So, so yes, that's, that's how we're trying to do that.
Thank you.
So not everything's a goal, it's an example of what we've done in the past as well.
Right, and, and they, they're, they're willing to, they've been willing to give us credit for that if we can show how there's sort of ongoing action or benefit coming from that, right? So in other words, a project that got rezoned maybe two years ago that they haven't built yet, we're still not seeing the fruit of that yet, right? But once something's zoned, approved, all built out, then it, it's, you kind of have to find something else.
It's a short shelf life.
Yes.
Hey, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have G P Z three, twenty twenty five. And I'll turn the time over to Mr. Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor, Steve Lehman with Planning and Zoning. It's good to be with you. It's been a little bit since we don't bring subdivisions here anymore. I think this is my first time back, so it's good to be with you. Steve, I think, gave me this assignment so I wouldn't forget how to present to the council. So this application is a request from Clark Construction and Services, also known as Liberty Homes, which has been a builder in our community almost my whole career here. So most recently up in the vistas at Westridge and also Sunset Hills. The request is one that will be familiar to the council back in June of twenty twenty four. An application was made to the council, was studied by the council, and then based on the comments received from the council, the applicant decided to withdraw their application. So this application is new and it is different from what the council would have reviewed a year ago. So the request is to change the general plan from large lot residential, which is roughly two to three units an acre, and the general commercial on part of the property to low density residential, which is three to four units an acre, and a zone change from A to R one eight. So the property is located at fifty nine ninety west, thirty five hundred south. The one point nine nine acres needs to be changed to one point nine three. The surveyor prepared a revised legal description and it dropped acreage just slightly. So just, we have a few slides to show you. And then we'll talk about a few highlights of the project. So this is the property highlighted here in red. To the west, you have the Meadow Breeze subdivision. That was done by Norm Bangader back in the early two thousands. That property is owned R one eight. Property to the northeast is a subdivision called the Meadowlands, which was developed in the late nineties. Zoning there is R one ten, which is a little bit misleading because the lots there roughly in the seven thousand square foot range. It was done as a P U D. You can see in the top portion of the screen right here, the developer dedicated two point three acres for use as, oh, and a city park. There were also some architectural requirements, some different things that were being done at that time. And so the planning council city council allowed for some density on the property. So the next slide is just a zoomed in version. So the property is vacant, with the exception of the Brown home, which is right up here on thirty five hundred south. One thing I would like to point out on this slide is there is a, a center running piece of property, sixteen point five feet in width, that extends from thirty five hundred south, north, the thirty three sixty south. And that handles storm water from thirty five hundred south. It is owned by West Valley City. The city has had discussions with the developer. We are willing participants in selling that property, provided that the developer is able to achieve zoning. At the present time, the developer has submitted an appraisal to the city, and we are currently undergoing our own appraisal to balance the values to see where we're at with regards to that. So that's what that two lines that run down through the middle of the property. This is just the zoning map. What's interesting about this application is a portion of this property is already zoned R one eight. So the piece right here is owned R one eight, and it's interesting, this little sliver of the city's property is owned R one eight as well. Balance of the property here is, is zoned agriculture. And I should point out from this slide, the remaining portion next to thirty five hundred south and where the existing home is, will remain zoned agriculture. This slide we included because there's a lot going on. I'll just highlight a couple of things. So we just wanted to show the council the existing one point four two acre piece and the small city piece is already zoned R one eight. The portion in green owned by West Valley City, approximately point one eight acres in size, would be rezoned and then the piece adjacent to that, one point seven five acres would be rezoned as well. We just have a couple of slides and then the concept plan. So this is the existing home that fronts onto thirty five hundred south. The next slide is looking across the property from the road in the Meadowland subdivision. And the next slide is looking a little bit further back on Timmeron Drive, which would be the sole point of access for the subdivision. So the concept plan is probably one of the better ones that you've seen over the years, taking into account the existing stub road coming out of the Meadowland subdivision. This would be a dedicated right of way. There would be eleven new lots, and then the existing home would be lot twelve as shown here. The street comes in and then extends southward and then ends in a cul-de-sac, which has the ability to extend further to the east at such time that properties develop along thirty five hundred south. If I could get Travis to back up a little bit to the, to the colored zoning map. One of the things that we did a number of years ago when we were processing the Meadowland subdivision is we provided two stub roads, Timmeron Drive here and Water Leaf Way on the east, with the expectation that these homes that are fronting onto thirty five hundred south would one day want to develop those properties. This property is roughly six hundred and twenty feet deep. So commercial development probably wouldn't be that extensive. So the thought was we would essentially connect these two roads and have housing on the back portion of this property that's owned A. So back to the concept plan. So as I mentioned, there are eleven new lots. The average lot size here is just under ten thousand square feet, nine thousand nine hundred and ninety square feet, I believe, which equates to a density of three point two units per acre. So all those owned R one eight, or if the zoning is approved, the density is roughly what an R one ten zone would net you. The developer is asking for three exceptions. I'll just go through those. The first is lots five and six have a frontage of approximately seventy four feet. In the R one eight zone, the frontage requirement is eighty. So the developer would like to ask for an exception on those two lots of five feet from eighty feet to seventy four feet or seventy five feet. The second exception is for the garages here. This will have a development agreement and we'll go over a couple of highlights there in just a moment. But the developer's proposing three car garages on all homes with the exception of lots five and six. The requirement there would be that they would, what they would propose to do is pour a pad next to the garage, so they would have the three car garages or the three car parking. The last exception is on lots one and three. Because the road pushes into the development a little bit, the, the rear yards of lots one and three may be scrunched. So they're asking for a reduction of five feet on the rear yard setback. Those are the three exceptions the developer is asking for. So just some highlights on the development agreement. The developer is proposing the square footage to be eighteen hundred square feet for Rambler and two thousand square feet for a multi-level or two-story. They're proposing a combination of single story Ramblers and also two stories. Materials would be brick, stone, fiber, cement siding. They do not like to use stucco in their products, so, which we have agreed with them on that. Frontyard landscaping would be installed by the builder as opposed to the homeowner. And they have a variety of housing plans. Ramblers, they have a craftsman style. We would also like to introduce some modern, some modern plans here as well. So that is our report with regards to this application.
Did I miss on the farmhouse style, no brick on the front?
Correct. They will, they will propose twenty five percent brick on all of the plans. The farm style, just because of the architectural nature there, they would prefer not to have any brick or stone on that plan.
So that's the front and the sides, correct?
Yes.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Lehman?
Looks like we've got about two hundred feet remaining as commercial?
Correct.
They're, I mean, I'm sure it's the developer that chose that number, but I just wonder if we want to kind of make it, are we going to make that standard now, you know? And we've got two or three twenty one. Two seventy seven down on the east side, and then right next to it, we've got two eighty four. Just wondering what is two hundred enough for commercial in the future?
Usually, we, we see anywhere between two to two hundred and fifty is kind of a the line that we've seen commercial. Depending upon the nature, the commercial two hundred feet is probably sufficient for commercial development. I think one of the issues here for the developer is taking the, the line, and that's just the, and that's just the general plan designation, the general commercial, is so that the density request would be below the two acres, therefore allowing him the opportunity to request the R one zoning. Over the years, we've asked individuals who are interested in developing this property to seek input from adjacent neighbors to see if they're interested in developing. Nobody's interested in developing right now.
Okay, see, no other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now go back to our budget refer fiscal budget changes reflecting the changes to Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mayor. No, Travis has got it well in hand, right? No?
Go back to the first.
The budget.
There we go, thank you very much. I'm Jim Welch, Finance Director for the city. We are considering this evening the fourth and final expected budget opening for the operations of the city as well as the other operations the city works, that the city operates. Budget openings are amendments to the budget that was originally adopted and in a subsequent amendments. They're made to accommodate changes that have occurred either in revenues or expenditures, take advantage of opportunities that may have come up or emergencies that may have occurred, also the acceptance of larger grants or rollovers of funds that were not spent in previous year. The budget amendments are required by state law as every dollar that's appropriated by the city needs to be approved by the city council. And this allows for the orderly and regular operation. And this allows for the orderly and regular operation of the city to continue throughout the year as things change. There are, and I would be happy to proceed any way you'd like to on this. There were some questions that were submitted by Councilman Whitestone. Also, there are some other issues in here. I'd be happy to highlight those and then come back to the questions or jump right into the questions. Let me know what you'd prefer and I'd be happy to do that.
Questions first, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Councilman Whitestone had a few questions and he felt that they would be best provided answers in the public forum. And I think I did this last time. I just kind of read the question, then just went through the answers and then answered any questions that you might have regarding those or anything that I may not have covered. So the first one is with regarding the Stormwater Funds. He says, what are the implications of converting the Stormwater Fund from an enterprise fund to a special revenue fund? How would this affect long-term financial reporting, fee structures or capital planning? So the Stormwater Fund was originally accounted for as a special revenue fund and that's really, these are accounting terms. They don't affect the operations of the fund at all. Legally, when we inquired some debt sometime ago to for a special project, we dedicated the funds, the funds from Stormwater to pay that debt service. That required us to report it as an enterprise fund. We still maintain separate financial statements. We still maintain operational statements on Stormwater. So virtually nothing changes. However, it does consolidate the assets of the Stormwater Fund with the with the city for overall financial reporting purposes. But the operations, planning, asset control, things like that all remain exactly the same. It's essentially an accounting function that simplifies accounting and brings it in line with the other ones that are not included as enterprise funds. Okay.
Any other questions on that one?
Okay. Question number two is the West Valley Arts Foundation transfer. Why is two point seven five million being transferred from the West Valley Arts Foundation to the general fund balance? The agreement represented last December outlined a transfer of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars by year end and another three hundred and twenty by April. So when the West Valley Arts Foundation was rolled off of the city and basically became its own entity, they had an accumulated negative operations that we had an estimate slightly over two point one, two point two million dollars at the end of last year. The estimate now is about two point seven million dollars. That includes those two payments that were made to the Arts Foundation to maintain their operations. As you know, they're now completely independent of the city. However, the accumulated deficit was about two point seven million dollars. Because they're no longer part of the city, that had to be paid back. So actually what we're doing is we're transferring funds from the general fund to the foundation, which is zero that out. So they've got a big hole that's got to be covered. We fill that hole and we're done. We, we have no more obligation with the foundation. Had that continued on year after year, if they made money, that hole would get bigger. If they operated in a deficit, I'm sorry, the other way. Yeah, if they operated in a deficit, it would get bigger, but if they made money, it would, it would shrink. This is the snapshot of where we are today and that is a required accounting function for us. Okay. The RDA transfers to the general fund, why are the RDA funds being used to cover operations in general fund departments such as planning and neighborhood services? The redevelopment agency benefits from the services of the general fund in a number of different ways. They benefit from administration. They benefit from planning and zoning. They benefit from accounting. The human resources, many administrative costs. They also benefit from planning and zoning for things like building inspections, for reviewing plans in the development areas, things like that. In order for the RDA to effectively, and I think I would say economically pay for these, it wouldn't make sense for them to go out and hire their own staff to fill these functions. So what we do is we provide them as a city and it's allowable by the city to reimburse, be reimbursed by the RDA for those costs. And that's what these transfers represent. So it's kind of a, we do that with a number of other things. We have things like the Stormwater funds. We have the funds that come in from the ambulance services, other ones that basically allows them to pay for the, pay their freight for for the costs of operations. Okay. Number four, fitness center and golf course operations regarding items number seven, fourteen and eighteen that's found on your footnotes. With the general fund transfers and increased utility costs, are these programs still budget neutral? Or are they generating additional costs? The fitness center is not budget neutral and has not been since the, since it began operations. There is a subsidy that the city pays to continue to maintain the operations of the fitness center. Currently, it's about one point six million dollars. That fluctuates on an annual basis. They do their very best operating like a business to cover that by making sure that their fees are in market. And I might like add this same sort of thing with the golf courses. A little bit of a different situation, but with the fitness center, they maintain the very best they can, realizing that it's public services. It needs to be provided to the community. The golf courses are very close to break even. The debt service is paid off on both of the courses. However, there is an accumulated negative cash of about two million dollars in each of those funds, which means that over the years, the city has had to subsidize their operations by paying for things that they're, that they haven't had the cash for. Now they have a positive net operations and I don't want to get too technical, but their, but their balance sheet shows that they've got positive assets. So they own the land, they own equipment, they own all these things. But you can't pay the bills with land and you can't pay the bills with positive equity. All you can do is pay for them with cash. Being about two million dollars short in each of the courses because they're not generating enough to currently pay that back, the city has to essentially loan that money to them. Cash has got to come from someplace. So over time, kind of this goes back to almost like the discussion of the, of the theater. If they have positive operations, those funds will come back and reduce that number. If they have negative operations, then that will either increase or the city will be required to pay the additional money as a subsidy. So these transfers represent some items that came up during the budget discussions that needed to be done. For example, those sand filters that you'll remember the discussion on. The pools would not be able to continue to operate. Here we are running into the summer. They've got to have new sand filters to keep the water up to spec. We also had some irrigation issues at both of the golf courses that occurred. We had a choice. We could have either said we will charge them to the equity of the golf courses and cause the negative to get bigger. Or did it make more sense to say the general fund needs to help cover those? And so that's what these transfers are. Are we good with that one?
So on the capital expenditures, so like the bridge, the bridges that recently been worked on. Were those paid out of the general fund? So operation wise, the day to day, getting the lights on sounds like the golf courses, both of them are self-sustaining, but on large capital expenditures like the bridges general fund.
Very, you're pretty close. Yeah, they, they're very close to breaking even. We really don't know at the end of the year if they're going to break even or not. They've generally been within a couple of hundred thousand. Sounds like a big number, but it's really kind of a small number when you're considering the total cost of operations. But they have been almost breaking even. So self-sustaining, no. The cost of the infrastructure like those, those bridge repairs that are going to be, need to be done. Some of those were funded this year out of our capital improvement fund where we actually transfer money to pay for those. Next year, there will be a number of those things that are recommended in the, in the proposed budget. Those will have to come from other funds rather than the golf course because the golf course does not have it. Am I good? Okay. And then number five, arena operations. For item number twenty six, with a one point five million dollar increase in operating costs due to a higher volume of events, is the arena currently self-sustaining or relying on a city subsidy? The Maverick Center does not currently rely on a city subsidy. They have positive operations, which is a wonderful thing. In the last couple of years, they've been able to do that. The purpose of the budget opening, as I mentioned in the heading on this, is that every dollar has to be appropriated by the city. So if, for example, the Maverick Center has an operation that we've authorized them at the first of the year to spend three million dollars and they have to spend four because they've got new events, they've got new things that are coming in and they generate another five million dollars. We don't care what the, well, of course we care what the net is, but we have to authorize that additional million dollars. In this case, it's estimated that they'll need another million and a half dollars to take care of the events throughout the rest of the year. Each of those events will net positive and it's a good thing. It's like buying inventory. You have to authorize more inventory to be purchased in order to have more sales. And that's how we look at that one.
Explanations?
That was a great discussion. Thank you very much. As far as highlights, I don't know how much you want to get into this one, but there's a couple of items that I just wanted to bring your attention to on the regular budget opening from the city besides those ones and the city. Most of, most every one of these, the city council has already talked about. But if there's anything in there that you'd like me to discuss that I would be more than happy to. We had a few things like we had a grant from the state of Utah, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Westlands Park project. That's, that's ongoing. We have the property purchase on thirty six forty one south at twenty two hundred west. That was a little over nine hundred thousand dollars. Let's see, the Veterans Memorial Park, that one's been on the agenda very recently. We received track funding and then we had some match money that needed to come up and Mr. Carroll addressed that one. Further down on the next page, we had the, what we just talked about, the Stormwater Conversion, which actually requires moving assets and that's why it shows thirty seven million dollars. That looks like a really big number and you go, wow, what's, what's happening here? And it's just a matter of changing it accounting wise. Has no impact on the operations of the Stormwater Fund or on the, on the city.
So that thirty seven million is assets and reserve funds for future projects?
Correct. That's the total operation.
Okay.
Yep. So everything moves over. We basically just pull it out of this bucket, put it in that bucket and nobody really knows the difference. Other than when we put the financial statements together, it makes a big difference for us. So, okay. And I think that kind of covers that, given those questions Mr. Whitestone had and be happy to answer anymore.
Anybody else have any questions on certain items?
Maybe you covered it. I missed it, but my twenty six, the one point five for arena operating costs.
That was, yeah, that was question number five that we just talked about.
That's the last one.
Buy the inventory for the cells.
Yep.
It'll be repaid back with the income.
There we go.
On the inventory. I can only say it because that's how Jim said it.
I was typing.
Is that the only one you had?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
All right. We'll now resume with our resolutions and we'll go to resolution twenty five dash seventy nine. Execution of a professional services agreement. We'll turn the time over to Mr. Johnson. So is Sam, what name your parents gave you or are you a Samuel, like dad is a dad?
I am a Samuel Johnson after the dictionary Samuel Johnson that did the English dictionary and my middle name is Franklin after my dad. So and Dan Johnson has talked about changing his name to Sam Johnson.
Because it's so much fun.
It is. It's much better. I am here to present a legislative and lobbying renewal contract with DLS contracting. That is Dave Stewart. I think you're all familiar with Dave. He has been our lobbyist for twenty years here in the city. He's had some very good successes and very good work. I have just gotten to know Dave recently and working with EFO and, and John Flores, talking to him and and seeing it, I think we're in a position that we want to go through with another year with Dave. And I know the mayor has worked with him over the last year or two as well. And Brandon Hill, who as we all know, does such a great job, has worked with him. And so the recommendation is that we would renew this for another year and really keep an eye on this coming year to see the benefit that we're getting as a city from the work that he does up there. He has a lot of connections and has had, like I said, some, some great success. And this year will be a year to really see how it goes and to track the work that he's doing. It's a one hundred thousand dollar a year contract that's paid out monthly. And the contract would run until March thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
That's a little bit of an increase over what we have been paying.
Over the years, yes, it is. Correct.
Okay, any questions on this one?
Can you Bobby for any other cities?
He does. He does some work for Park City and does some work for Salt Lake City. And our discussions with him and something that he's made it very clear over the years is that he will not do any conflicts that are between any of the cities. Meaning if something comes up between us, but from talking to him, that's a big rarity that it would affect us if it's benefiting one of the other cities.
How long have we been using DLS?
About twenty years.
Twenty years.
Yep.
He got his ten million just a few years ago.
Yeah.
I mean, he gets us something. I can't remember what he got us last year.
I would have to look. I know that he's done a lot of public works and roads that has had some great effect. In this, this role for me, where I've reached out to some other lobbyists and some other groups, he is respected in the industry. He's well-known for his work up there. With all that said, I have not had a chance to work with him on a daily basis or up at the legislature and talking with EFO, I think we, we both agree that this is a year to to really keep an eye on it, to make sure that we're getting, that's hundred thousand dollars is a legit contract and we want to make sure we're getting the benefit out of it. So hopefully next year at this time, when I present it to you, I can have a full working knowledge of the work to make sure that you're all comfortable with it. But as of right now, I am very comfortable with this contract.
Just if I can add you. So last year he did give us funding for two, two roads. I believe they added up to a little over two million dollars. Total. And then one of them was.
Dan's right behind you.
Is that correct?
Yeah, two point three for four years left.
So he, he had filled with years and like, just want to add to it. Sam's saying, I mean, this is opportunity for us to continue to evaluate. But as far as return, he's got money. It's last year. We have some, we have some potential projects coming up. I mean, we have the Olympics, we have funding for the Maverick Center. We got other other potential that we've talked about, the council too, that we're going to watch as well.
Is it all state lobbying or?
So this is just our state lobbyists. We also have a federal lobbyist that a contract should be. I think next year it's up for.
It is next year. And so I think this goes to just when you have thoughts or questions, I would definitely love to talk with you all and work with you on this coming year, federal and state level too.
Yeah, who is Brandon, has made contacts with?
It has been. I'm going to be working with him now with some support from Brandon. Brandon is the beauty, but he's also got a lot of smarts. So I'm going to be using him a lot.
And can I, sorry, Larry, I, I'm sorry, I don't know if I've made that an Oscar. Oh, I'm, oh, I'm so sorry. Shoot, we should have, I guess I should have done that. I apologize.
Introduce your new employee. Sorry.
No, no worries.
Well, I should have, I should have let the council know that Sam will be taking over responsibilities that Brandon had previously.
With legislature.
With the legislature and very excited for, I know Brandon did an amazing job and big shoes to fill. Really excited about Sam being able to utilize his skill sets that feel like played right into what we're going to be asking him to do.
I think after two years, Brandon was pretty done with it. And Brandon did a great job. Yeah, it was. And Brandon's been great to sit down with me and start making introductions and had my first girl sit down with Dave Stewart just two weeks ago. And so there's a lot of work, a lot of big fills to, a lot of big shoes to fill with Brandon, but excited for the opportunity and appreciate EFO giving me the opportunity as well.
And that's what we're thinking about this year as a year to, we'll have Sam starting fresh, fresh pair eyes there. Give him an opportunity with. Give him an opportunity with with David to to evaluate our, the value there.
Yeah. Ready for lots of yelling up at the Capitol from me.
I was gonna say, the six AM to the ten PM.
Excited for that.
Said your family goodbye for a month.
Pretty much. They're expecting it.
Okay. I don't see any other questions. Thank you. All right, uh, we'll go to resolution twenty five dash eighty and turn the time over to Nick Hales for our fitness room equipment.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Nick Hales, Chief Accountant with the city. You might be asking yourself, why is the accounting division presenting fitness equipment? Uh, I'm also on the the board that runs the city hall fitness room here at the at the city hall. Um, many of you have probably noticed we're going through a little bit of a remodel next door. Uh, going from locker rooms that used to be pretty open and didn't have a lot of privacy to some individual changing rooms uh, that are, that will have showers and bathroom facilities inside. Uh, gives us an opportunity to have some additional floor space for um, some some additional equipment. Uh, the funds that we're using to to buy this come from the employees who participate in the fitness room. There's a apparel deduction that employees pay into. And so a hundred percent of the the funding for this purchase comes from those funds. Um, we would like to request approval to purchase forty four thousand five hundred seventy three dollars worth of equipment from uh, Pacific Fitness. We got four bids for equipment uh, after doing a survey um, of the employees who participate of some of the things that they wanted to see. And so this represents a lot of that equipment that the employees wanted to see that's within our budget to be able to provide. Um, we're upgrading a couple of the treadmills. We're upgrading the some of the strength equipment. Um, we're really going, we have a lot of the free weight stuff that's in that room and this will move us towards some of the cable weights. That's more of a an intermediate level where the free weights are maybe for those who are a little more serious about workouts, this eases some people into doing some of the the workouts of the room next door.
Any questions? Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks.
Next one is um, revolution twenty five eighty one. Authorizing installation of equipment by Magna Water. To provide service uh, in the wetlands park. Ms. Ericson.
Yes, good evening, uh, council and mayor pro tem. Well, the mayor stepped out. Um, so yes, this is for a water meter at uh, the the Wetland Park, Laffa Parkway Boulevard. Um, it's from Magna Water for sixty three thousand five hundred eighty nine dollars. It covers the impact fees, uh, installation and the cost of the meter itself. And it's a three inch meter. Uh, it'll be used for the landscaping as well as all of the buildings as the as they're built throughout the process, but we kind of have to put the put the big one in to to start, so it'll it'll cover everything in the future. So.
Questions? Were easy today.
All right. Thank you.
Uh, revolution twenty five eighty two. Were to contract to B Hanson Construction uh, for the thirty fifth South thirty four fifty four hundred West safe sidewalk project. Wilson.
Good evening, council. Kobe Wilson with the engineering division. So you may recall last fall, we, well, last year we applied for some safe sidewalk money through the state um, with UDOT. We were successful in getting that. We executed a co-op agreement last fall to access those funds and begin design for the project. The design's been complete and it's been advertised. We opened bids um, on May thirteenth, had seven responses. And the purpose of this resolution is to authorize a contract with B Hanson Construction um, in the amount of just shy of three hundred and forty thousand uh, to move forward with the construction of this project.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Watson? Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, now go to resolution twenty five dash eighty three. And turn the time over to Mr. Springmeier for two warranty deeds.
Afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, yeah, so the RDA's got the property we don't need anymore. We'd like to give it back. Not this is uh, property uh, resolution to transfer four parcels of property that were part of the greater land acquisition for the Fairborn area. Um, what's remaining uh, these, the the remaining pieces of these four parcels that are roadways and rights of way um, in around the Fairborn area, they are they they should be city owned property, not redevelopment agency property and will be the first step in in several that I will be bringing to you over the coming months to help clean up the land held for resale um, balance sheet with the redevelopment agency and rid them of land that is not being held for resale like these. So we will be giving them to the city if you would like them.
Any questions for Mr. Springmeier?
Mention really quick that the same agenda item is also on the redevelopment agency because this is the accepting, then then there's the giving. So if you'd like, I could come up and say it again, but I doubt it. Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll go to our consent agenda. This is a typical warranty day and temporary construction easement. Did anybody have any questions on it? And are there any of the resolutions that you would like moved to the consent agenda for June tenth? All of them going over?
Yeah.
Okay. Right, now we'll review the agenda for the regular redevelopment agency, housing authority and municipal building authority. The RDA is the consent of the deed. Does anybody have any questions on that one? Are we good? Okay, then we'll let Mr. Welch clean up the others.
Thank you very much. Um, these uh, let's see, there's two items on this. I'll just go through both. Uh, first is the budget opening, which we've talked about the purpose for the budget openings. With the um, redevelopment agency, there is one item on there and it has to do with those transfers to the general fund that we talked about in the previous note. And that's the only other item that's on that for a budget opening.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions on the budget? Okay.
Hey, uh, the second item is the adoption of the uh, budget for fiscal twenty twenty six. The three agencies are not subject to truth and taxation and they're not affected by property tax increases for a hearing process. So what we'll do is this is being considered for adoption at the next meeting. And that will be the final time you'll see when we adopt the final budget for the RDA, the housing authority and the building authority. So this uh, twenty three million dollars represents the total expected budget uh, for twenty twenty six. Uh, as you know, throughout the year, that may change as as uh, Mr. Springmeier recognizes new opportunities and and potentially new revenues or opportunities come up. We'll take advantage of those. So that's what this, that will take care of this one. And uh, then we'll address that with the other agencies as they come up too.
Okay. Thank you. You got it. Thank you.
Okay, the next one is the housing authority. Uh, similar discussion there with the budget openings. Uh, on this case, there is a trend, there is a budget opening for one point nine million dollars. This represents additional funds that the housing authority uh, was able to draw down from HUD for operations for this fiscal year. Good thing, helps them cover the operations and expenditures. Uh, and that's the only item on there.
Any questions on the housing authority?
Okay, the adoption of the housing authority for next year is five point five million dollars. Um, they bring in their money from vouchers and uh, they basically allocate all those to either operations or to uh, their programs that go outside and they spend virtually every dollar that comes in. If uh, a a fund that was set up for the payment of debt service for building projects. Uh, we have one item as a building building authority item on this budget opening. It's forty four thousand seven hundred forty seven dollars and oh, two cents. This is to close out the repair and reserve fund that was accumulated by the city to cover the um, facility needs of the theater. Now that that theater is being run and operated by the foundation and the title of the theater has been uh, transferred, these repair and reserve funds come back to the theater fund. Uh, they are netted into that number of the two point seven million dollars to kind of offset that. So they it it would be nice if it was the two point seven, but it was only forty uh, forty four thousand. But that's that's bringing that money back into city operations.
Okay. Questions on that one? Seeing none?
Okay. And the last one is the final adoption of the um, building authority. Uh, we trans, there's a transfer in of two point four eight one three hundred and twenty five dollars and debt service of an equal amount. Uh, similar to the housing authority, if we bring it in and spend it, it gets spent. If it doesn't, then it will roll over for uh, potentially debt that's due next year, but we budget just the amount of debt service in this fund.
See any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next we have our council calendar. Did anybody have any questions? Or concerns on that one? Ranger High has our graduation tomorrow at nine AM. Anybody wants to go? Okay, seeing no questions? Um, we'll go to the new business, any potential future agenda items? Hey, any council reports?
One, oh, sorry, go ahead. Um, went to the Central Valley View recital for my hometown and uh, I've been to a number of them past couple of years, but this was the most recent, so it was fun. Adults and kids alike did a great job.
Yep.
Not being at the Purple's new distribution center.
Yeah.
And sold it. Because now he can sit back and not worry about opening new distribution centers.
There you go.
Also went to the Whittier Elementary. More excitement. I've seen it Whittier for twenty years. I did finally find when I was there though.
Oh, good. In the pictures?
Uh huh.
Good.
So, but uh, great participation on renaming that street and everything else, so. They were excited to have it and kids were even more excited that they got to come and something they said brought to us into fruition, so. That was very interesting amendment. Of course, the annual uh, police banquet was the next night. So.
It was a busy week.
It was a, it was a big day. You try to keep busy, even though we've got an extra week off.
Yeah, I think that week had something every night.
Yes.
At the Whittier, a lot of the kids are still wearing their shirts. A hundred and forty years, really proud of that. And then I went to two of the recitals. And the northeast. That place was packed. They did a really good job. Uh, Granger West, one of the adults taking ukulele, ukulele. Look, whatever it's called. Yes, that thing. He, his wife passed away last fall. And he said, I'm sick of TV. And so they sent out a flyer and he saw it and he went down, eighty years old. And played the ukulele and sang at that recital. And that was pretty cool.
Eighty years of that old.
I know, it's just a youngster. I know. But you can start anytime is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Most people would have just stayed home, watched TV, but I was really excited that he started doing that. So it's kind of fun.
So I also went to one of the Central Valley hometown. I went Tuesday night and Thursday night, ukulele piano. It's great. Um, Whittier was great. It's really good. Um, also the Westview Challenge Course, ribbon cutting there. Parks Rec was there. Um, it's pretty cool. I walked the forty yard dash. There were several kids that wanted EFO to race them. How did you search? Yeah, there is good representation. EFO, John and Harold. I was all trying to get all three of them out there. Because they're a lot faster than me. But they wouldn't go. They wouldn't do it. But it was great. It's a, it's a cute course. I hope that people will enjoy it and take their families there. Um, timed you, has the obstacle course. Um, yeah. It's pretty cool.
It timed, it timed you on the forty yard dash or?
Yeah, the forty yard dash, timed you on the uh,
Obstacle course. Almost like the ninja, American Ninja.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah, Don held himself back from going on that.
Can we have a trophy for the employee that has the quickest score? John's, John's four. Oh.
Every time I drive by there frequently and it's a hit.
Oh, good.
There are people there using it. My daughter challenged me not at the ribbon cutting. And she beat me on the forty. I pulled a hamstring.
Oh, yeah. Tell over.
I'm out for a while, but I'm reclaiming my title, but it's been a hit. That forty is
Yeah.
And she did the challenge course as well, so.
Yeah.
Great, great additions.
Good job Parks Department. Yeah, really good job. Cool.
And then the Memorial Day ceremony.
Oh, yeah. Yesterday, that was nice.
I, I mean, I have we didn't have it last year, but previous year, um, just crowd wise, I think we exceeded that. We had people in the back. And and my dad came and he didn't know, but he played the bugle when he was in the military. So he says, I know we have Sergeant Ramirez. I know he's done it for years, but he offered to be backup.
Oh, nice.
At some point.
That's really cool. Yeah, it was a good turnout. Okay. Uh, we do have need for a closed session for disposition of real property. Someone would like to make that motion?
I'll move, make that motion and we will only talk about disposition of real property and adjourn when the discussion is complete.
Okay. One second.
Yes, I should.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Ms. Kattick.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
And Mayor Lake?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Yes.
Councilmember Northville? Councilmember Northville?
Yes.
All right, we'll take a five minute break and those who stay in the room are needed for that. And that will see you at six thirty.